I'd like to call tonight's meeting, November 26, 2024, of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Mark Chambers, come up, please.
Well, I get to be your substitute again tonight.
Thank you for doing that.
It is an honor always to come and to bestow the blessing upon this wonderful group of commissioners and our leaders and to our guests that are here tonight. May we pray. Father, we give you thanks for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We have so many blessings that we do not deserve, but you love us so much that you still give us your blessings. Help us to learn to count our blessings in this week of Thanksgiving as we get together with family and friends, or even if we're by ourselves. May we take a moment to reflect on this year and the things of the past and just praise you for all the things you have done for us. Bless our country. Continue blessing our city leaders, both elected and appointed, and all the workers. We give you thanks for them, for all of them working together to make this city great. We thank you for that blessing, Father. And for those who are here tonight, we ask you blessings upon them. And be with those that are on the highway or flying or wherever they may be traveling. We ask you to keep them safe. Father, thank you again for all your love. We ask these things in your holy, precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Mark. All right, we've got a proclamation tonight. I'll go ahead and read this, and Stephanie, are you going to come up and accept it then? Okay, perfect. From the Office of the Mayor, City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, proclamation, whereas the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas celebrates our local small businesses and contributions that they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 59% of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small, independently owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday 2023. And whereas, Pittsburgh, Kansas supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Arts Council, Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Advisory Board, and small businesses in Pittsburgh encourage you to shop small and participate in Small Business Saturday on November 30th, this Saturday. Now therefore, I, Stu Hyte, Mayor of Pittsburgh, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday, and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. And it is very important. We do appreciate our small businesses and people who want to invest in our communities, and we can't thank you all enough. And I know Stephanie will accept this for, you know, number of being a small business owner and a member of these committees too. So, so thank you very much. And everybody shop local this weekend and throughout the year. Thank you. All right, we'll open her up to public input. Anyone with public input, please come forward, state your name. All right. Seeing none, we'll close public input and move on to the consent agenda. Besides item B and item I to pull off, does anybody else have anything to pull off?
Item E.
Item E as well?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Sorry. I would accept a motion to approve all the other items, A, C, D, F, G, H, Jake, and K.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and approved to, to, I guess, vote on those particular items. All those in favor, roll call vote. Darren, will you do that, or?
Sure. Brooks?
Yes.
Monsal?
Yes.
Sigley?
Yes.
And Mayor Hyte?
Yes. All right, those items were approved. Item B, first one that was pulled off, approval of collateral assignment of development agreement between Pittsburgh Partners LLC, a Kansas limited liability company, Pittsburgh Investors LLC, a Kansas limited liability company, Pittsburgh Northridge LLC, a Kansas limited liability company, and Pittsburgh Development Associates LLC, a Kansas limited liability company, collectively the borrower in parentheses, and lead bank, the lender in parentheses, and authorize the mayor to sign the ESTOP, or ESTOPL, notice of and acknowledgement of collateral assignment of development agreement on behalf of the city. And I hope that all the other items are just as easy to get out as though, so.
Mayor, commissioners, the reason we asked you to pull this, there's actually a second collateral assignment with the same developer that we're going to ask you to consider, but we'll take them one at a time. Be happy to. This is obviously for the Northgate, or, yeah, Town Center, excuse me, CID that was approved in 2022. And basically what we're doing, they've asked that we reassign the proceeds that we collect through the taxes. Instead of giving it directly to the developers, we'd be giving it to their bank, their financier. So that's the first item before you, and we do need a roll call vote on this.
I've moved to approve.
Been moved to approve. I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item B. All those in favor, roll call.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsal?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigley? Mayor Hyte?
Yes.
Thank you. The second one is a similar. This is related to a sales tax rebate agreement that we put in place. You took action on that in June of this year. And once again, they would just like to enter this agreement to make sure that the proceeds go directly to their bank. Once again, we need a roll call vote.
Move to approve.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the addition on the collateral assignment. All those in favor, roll call.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsal?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigley?
Yes.
Mayor Hyte?
Yes. All right. Motion carried. Item E, approval of ordinance number G 1368, amending section 82, Article 2 of the Pittsburgh City Code, adding Division 6, property and sanitation rates and charges, section 82-150, monthly rates and charges, and section 82-151, bulky item pickup rates and fixing rates and minimum charges for solid waste service, and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance on behalf of the city.
The reason it had to be pulled off and voted on separately, it's really my fault. It's the form, the form of that ordinance wasn't exactly right. And we made some changes to the amount, the rates that we were going to charge for bulky item pickup. Those are the only changes from the, from the document that's in your packet. We did, upon further reflection, we decided to lower the rates for bulky item pickup charges.
It's one of those changes that, it's a nice change for, for the whole community because it is much smaller and it also is specific. I don't know, does anybody want me to read that particular, the bulky rubbish collection?
I just have a question on item C, rescue items that cannot be transported by property and sanitation department equipment. I take it that items that don't fit in the trash truck. So what items would those be and how would transport those?
My signal to Dexter was I'd look over my shoulder.
I didn't hear the question.
He's talking about specialty items.
Okay.
What can you describe what they would be?
Some of the ones that we're looking at right now, specialty items, would be tires, paint cans, things that you typically can't take to the landfill.
So want to be couches and washers and dryers?
We'll take, well, couches, we can take landfill. Washer and dryer, we'll take to a different location.
So you will pick them up?
Yep.
Dexter, would that be under, would those be under special items?
Yes.
Okay.
I know when we first started talking about this, you also said something about brushes. Brush still included?
Yep, we can, yes.
But it has to be a certain size?
Well, if it's bundled in no longer than four foot length, no more than two foot diameter, and bundled, we'll just put it in the trash. Those things can be taken to the landfill. If you have a large amount that's a bulky item pickup, then obviously we'll have to take that a different.
Would you take the brush to the landfill or to the?
If it's a small amount, if you have a very small amount, you know, just that you raked up a bag of leaves or something like that, it'll go to the landfill. If you, you know, I think in the future with our wastewater treatment, we're going to have places we can take leaves. We have a burn site. It just depends on the quantity.
All right, thank you. No further questions. I move to approve.
Just, just one more thing. If I could, this is actually creating sections 70-1 and 70-2, as opposed to amending the sections that were set forth in the addenda memo, so.
Any other comments? Accept the motion for that, to approve?
Something? I second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve item E. All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. City Manager, please.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsal?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigley?
Yes.
Mayor Hyte?
Yes. Item E passed. On to item I, approval of staff recommendation to accept an emergency solutions grant, ESG, from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, KHRC, in amount of $97,363 to help prevent individuals or families from possibly becoming homeless, or assist those who are homeless for the grant period of July 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the city. Good evening.
Good evening. How can I answer any questions?
Well, my question is, I'm looking at the administrative fees, $2,562.
Yes.
Emergency shelter, $38,800. Rapid rehousing, $38,800. What is street outreach? $17,201.
So street outreach will be through community health center. So they will be working through case management, engagement, transportation, and special programs for individuals that have special, or the special population. So they will be doing the homeless certifications, the homeless assessments, case management, and trying to reach out to those that are actually homeless on the streets and point them into directions of the rapid rehousing program or more mainstream voucher programs.
Is that something new this year?
It is. It is new. So they were awarded the day shelter funds, but with the community health center and the first national, or first United Methodist Church agreement, they have now moved out of the Wesley House and is doing it at the community health center. So they have asked the city to change the grant, or to submit to Kansas Housing Corporation to change the grant from day shelter to street outreach. So it is something new that this, for this year.
My next question is, they will match the contributions under this agreement. The matched contributions may be cash or noncash. What does that mean?
So you can do as in kind or staff salaries. So that is what they have chose to do, is staff salaries to match the money.
So they're hiring more staff?
No, it is the director of building health will be the staff salary that they will be matching.
So she's getting paid by community health?
Well, the direct, well, the director of community, of building health is paid by community health. So what they're doing is matching a portion of her earnings as the grant.
So that would be their match of?
Yes.
Actual money?
Yeah, it's not, the money is not coming out of this grant. They are high, they have, they're paying a case manager out of that, but the match is coming from community health.
And the last question, to the extent of any grant funds are used to purchase any real or personal property, what does that mean?
So that you could purchase like laptop, software systems, or anything to do, to do their job with that case or with that street outreach.
So she wouldn't have that, or whoever it is that works for community health wouldn't have that equipment already at community health, they have to buy?
Well, they, it's a, they can buy it with these funds, but I'm, as far as, if you look at the itemization, the budget itemization, they do not show that they're going to be buying any equipment. It is just going to be engagement, case management, transportation, and services for special population. They would have to indicate what they were going to be buying.
But they're not buying?
They're not buying anything. And if they did, we would review that to make sure that it was an eligible expense before we would draw down any funding.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have no further questions.
Any other comments?
Good job, Megan. Okay.
Entertainer motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item I. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsal?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigley?
Yes.
Mayor Hyte?
Yes. Item I passed. All right, if it's okay with the, all the commissioners, I'd like to, under the consideration of following, I'd like to move item E up ahead of the public hearing. Any objections to that? Item E?
Do you need a motion?
Um, no. I think we're just, we're just moving it out of, just taking item, just taking item E out of order. So, item E is a sister city agreement. Consider approval of an agreement for the establishment of a sister city relationship between City of Pittsburgh and the city of Sutri, Italy. This is kind of an interesting little project, and I'll have Ask Dick Coleman to come up and, and discuss that a little bit.
Sure. I guess I present it here, is that right?
Yeah, sure.
My grandfather, Filippo Fonecari, immigrated from Italy to southeast Kansas in 1910. And when he died, we really didn't have that much information about where he, where he lived in Italy. And we tried to find it through Ellis Island, couldn't find anything, so we just kind of gave up. Then fast forward to 2005, I got a phone call and it was from my family. They were, fortunately, they were looking for our family. So three weeks later, Luciano Fonecari came over from Sutri, Italy. Sutri is a town of about 6,000. And what, year after next, we're celebrating our 150th anniversary? Well, Sutri dates back to the, not the Romans, they date back to the Etruscans. It is, if you Google it, you see anywhere it was begun around 750 B.C. And, you know, talk about history. And so Luciano came over here. One thing led to another. Then that fall, my, my wife and I and my cousin and her husband went over there. Then Luciano and his brother and sister and their spouses came over here. And then, and it was at that time when Marty Beasley was the mayor here. And in fact, Luciano, it was, it was homecoming weekend when they were here. And Luciano rode in the parade with Marty Beasley. So then, I don't know, Ron, was it before or after that that you all went over there?
It was before that.
Okay. Well, Marty's, again, when she was still mayor, and about four other couples, including Ron and Susan, went over there and spent what, three days and one night?
Yeah. Believe me, it was a blur. It was a lot of wine drunk.
Right, right, right. And, and, and of course, Jerry Leves is with me. Jerry was with me a couple of weeks ago when we got this. And, but we keep going back to that little town of Sutri. It is just a unique little town. It's a wall town and, and they have a, in fact, every January, on January 17th, for the next like 10 days, they have, they have a celebration called San Antonio. Not San Antonio, but San Antonio. And I mean, it's day and night. And they've been doing this for like hundreds of years. I have no idea. But Ron got the ball rolling, rolling. About three or four months ago, Ron said, you know, I'm trying to reach somebody in Sutri, the mayor or whomever, and we, we'd like to see if they want to become sister cities with Pittsburgh, Kansas. And I said, well, Ron, I'm, Jerry and I are going to be going over there. Why don't I see what, I said, just give me what you sent to them. So I did. And the first thing they asked me, I thought something was up. It said, what's, what, what's the name of your mayor? So I told them. And then, and then the last, the, I guess, next to the last night we were there, Jerry and I went to a ceremony thinking it was just a commission meeting. You know, didn't know anything about it. And they, they called us to the front, and not only did they consider us for sister cities, they gave us this plaque with, it's, it's, it's designating us upon your approval of being sister city. And it says, of course, it's in Italian, but so I interpret it, "To Mayor Stewart Hyte and the citizens of the City of Pittsburgh. With this pact of friendship, we unite our communities across oceans and cultures, promoting respect, solidarity, and cooperation between our peoples. Sutri, Italy, October 2024. Mayor Dr. Matteo Amore." And hopefully you will approve this. I think that it's just the beginning of things. I have a feeling you're going to see more. By the way, their citizens are called Sutini, you know, citizens of Sutri. And hopefully this will entice people who are going to be venturing to Italy from Pittsburgh to go over there and check out Sutri. Sutri is about 35 miles northwest of Rome, and it's, but it's unique, but it's still separated enough that it's really unique. If you have any knowledge of Italian history, you've heard of the Via Cia. It's on the Via Cia highway. So with that, Ron or Jerry, do you have anything you want to add about Sutri that, that they might want to know?
Sutri was part of the Etruscan region at one time. So it's, it's all lava. So when we were there, they said, we're going to go to this place where we meet. And it kept going down and down and down and down. And we went to these caves down below the city that are 1,000 years old. It was wonderful. If you ever get a chance to visit the city, you really need to. I'll tell you something. One thing about the wall of the city, you look at the wall and you see there's different brick about every four to six feet. And I asked the mayor at that time, I said, what, why is the brick changed now? And he said, the weapons got better and better. Yesterday, two stones. And as the weapons got better, they had to build it higher and higher and higher.
And Jerry, you have anything?
Just, you don't need to take a corkscrew. They have plenty.
And one, one modern thing, I don't know if any of you have seen the movie Nine, about 10 years ago, with Daniel Day Lewis and Nicole Kidman? Well, when you saw the last, the, the night shot at the end of the movie when Nicole is singing to him at the fountain, that's at the piazza of Sutri. So it's a unique little town.
One thing Dick told me, and when he was explaining this to me, I think you mentioned, we could probably class up our meeting a little bit. I think, didn't you say they start with a violin player at their, at their commission meeting?
We had two violinists.
Two, yeah, two violinists at the end.
Yes, in fact, when, when they were playing, I forget the name of the song, but it was the, remember The Son of a Woman when Al Pacino was dancing the tango? That was it. And I was, we were thinking, here we are in Italy, Al Pacino might be coming out just many times. But anyway.
Not only will we accept that, we'll, we're also, I've signed an agreement establishing a sister city relationship. Not only will we accept that, we'll, we're also, I've signed a, an agreement establishing a sister city relationship between the city of Pittsburgh and, and the city of Sutri, Italy. And have that in both English and Italian, and I will not even attempt to read the Italian.
Well, I have your, I have the interpretation here too.
Very good, very good.
Good, thank you.
Dr. Siggly, would you accept that with me?
And by the way, the mayor hopes to be in Pittsburgh within the next year, year and a half.
Oh, good.
All right, thank you, Dick. And everybody that had a hand in making this, making this happen, that's a pretty, pretty unique item. Look forward to maybe taking a field trip to Sutri someday, that'd be awesome. All right, so we'll, we'll get back on order here and open, open this up for public hearing.
You need to vote to approve?
Oh, sorry, on item E, have a motion to approve.
I move to accept the city of, of Sutri as a sister city to Pittsburgh, Kansas.
Been moved and seconded to accept item E, to accept our sister city of Sutri, Italy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. All right, now we'll go into public hearing. Item A, is it Muth or Muth?
Muth.
Muth? Muth Properties LLC Industrial Revenue Bonds. The city has given notice of a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at 5:30 P.M. Or as soon thereafter, as may be heard, in the courtroom of the Pittsburgh Law Enforcement Center, 201 North Pine, Pittsburgh, Kansas, 66762. In regard to the issuance of the issuer of the industrial revenue bonds Heritage Tractor Project in one or more series in a principal amount not to exceed 7,500,000. The bonds, and in regard to the exemption of ad valorem taxation of property constructed or purchased with the proceeds of such bonds. Good evening, Blake.
Good evening, Mr. Mayors, members of the commission. This is a request related to a recent expansion by Heritage Tractor here in Pittsburgh. It added a little over 30,000 feet of space, of distribution and service space. This was an investment by the company of over $7 million, which under the, the city's schedule and the city's policy, qualifies them for a full 10 years of property tax abatement. Want to understand, everybody understands that that's just on the increase, so it's not that they're not paying property taxes at all. It's really more of a property tax freeze as a way to help them recoup their, their investment. But you, about a year and a half ago, approved the sales tax exemption component of this on the construction materials, and now we're coming back and asking for the, the property tax exemption. Here, we've done, thanks to the, the city clerk and, and also Gilmore and Bell, who is here this evening. We've done all the proper public notices and notified the other taxing entities, but we bring that to you now. That's what the public hearing will be for. We've got several people, Heritage Tractor, STEM Tax, and also Gilmore and Bell that could answer any questions that you may have related to the project.
So we'll open the public hearing. Any comments regarding this? Not seeing any, we'll close public hearing. And move into consideration of the following, item A, which pertains to this same issue, or same situation. Item A, Resolution Number 1289. Consider adoption of Resolution Number 1289 amending Resolution Number 1269, determining the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility to be located in the city and authorizing execution of related documents.
Art, would you, or Sue, would one of you please come up and not make me talk about the IRB?
I would be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'm Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell. We represent the city as bond counsel. And this first action with Muth Properties is simply to add the concept of a property tax exemption on the front end of the action that was taken about a year and a half ago. So all this does is, I think I turned that on. All that does is simply amend the original Resolution 1269 to add an element granting them their property tax exemption. And that's all this action does.
What, how many years is that?
10.
10.
That is the maximum allowed under state law.
Isn't that consistent with every other IRB?
Yes.
We traditionally do, we just split this up?
Mr. Benson said it's just on the improvements. So it's not the, the whole permit facility that they've had.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item A. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Item A is approved. Item B, ordinance number S-11, S-1104. Consider approval of ordinance number S-1104 authorizing the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2024 Heritage Tractor Project for the purpose of acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing other related documents and actions.
Thank you, I figured it was simpler to stay up. The ordinance is the final action to be taken by the commission, granting the approval for the mayor and clerk to sign all of the related documents pertaining to the actual issuance of these bonds. These bonds will need to remain outstanding for the period of the property tax abatement, which is a full 10 years. This is a self-financed project, so there's no third-party purchaser of these bonds. They are purchased by Muth Properties, which meets all of the state law requirements pertaining to the issuance of IRBs, granting of a sales tax exemption on the materials that went into construction, as well as granting this 10-year property tax exemption. Be happy to answer any questions. I also might mention that Jeremy Nuth is here from the company. I don't think he wanted to, to come up and speak, but if you've got any questions on the project itself, he can be, answer those as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer. Just a brief overview, it's adding service space to take care of customers, both large and small, with all sizes of equipment. We hope to, we know we're going to be recruiting and hiring more employees out there. It's got a heat and air-conditioned shop, so kind of the first of its area in the agriculture industry. And to try and help keep recruiting great talent to take care of customers in areas that are helping feed, clothe, and fuel the work.
Got to come to your open house, it's an amazing facility, should be very, very proud of it.
Thank you.
Is this a, I know you have 10 or 12 other places scattered around. Is this a, a hub to hold equipment to send out, or?
It's pretty much for just Pittsburgh and the surrounding areas. We have another facility in Joplin, we just expanded it here a couple of years ago. Anderson, Missouri, Lamar, Lockwood. But on the Kansas side, you got to go up to, we have a facility in Baldwin City and Atlanta, it's the closest on the Kansas side. So we've got 21 in the area here that are all contiguous. So the equipment moves from one to the other. A customer may purchase it new here in Pittsburgh, and then it gets traded in in two years and goes to another facility. But this facility will help support others because of the size and just the technology in the building, the ability to have a lot, a lot of cranes in there. And so we will bring larger projects from these other facilities that can't handle the size of, of some of the machines that are, that we're selling today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I hear a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item B, ordinance number S-1104. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Item B is approved. Item C, Home Rule, Home Rule Ordinance 6. Consider approval of ordinance HR6, a home rule ordinance of the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to finance the construction of a building to be leased for economic development purposes in the city. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, city's bond counsel. Appreciate you having me out tonight. So this ordinance, for your consideration, authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds to finance the construction of this new facility, with the plan being that the facility will be leased to Eagle Pitcher to help with their expansion of their existing businesses out there. Currently, the city is in negotiations with the company on that lease agreement, with the anticipation being that that lease will provide sufficient rental payments from the company to the city to help the city offset any of its bond costs that it will have in the issuance of those bonds and repayment of those bonds. So that at the end of the day, the, the full amount of the money necessary to repay those bonds will actually come from the lease of that facility to Eagle Pitcher. Approval of this ordinance would authorize the city to issue up to $6 million of its general obligation bonds in order to finance that project. You may notice this may look a little bit different from some of the other project authorizations in that it is a home rule ordinance as opposed to a resolution which other types of projects may use. The reason for that is, under the Kansas Constitution, it provides home rule authority to cities in order to supplement and kind of make its own necessary rules and, and ways to do things within the city. And using the home rule ordinance procedure allows the city to actually provide funds to make these types of financings for economic development projects in order to help stimulate and encourage the growth of the economy of the city and its local community. So with that being said, I'll pause for any questions that anybody may have.
I don't have any for you, but Darren, could you talk a little bit about this project and where this building will be located?
Sure. The site is in the research park on the south side of the university, just north of the Names and Numbers Building. Right now, there's the planned expansion of the Pitt State facility to be the prove-out facility. On the east side of this, there's a KBI facility that we're actually going to be talking about next. This would be on the city's acres, I believe it's 2.6 or 3 acres right in the middle. So it wouldn't be adjacent to their current property up north in the industrial park, but it would be on the south side on, on city property.
So we'll own the, the building until they pay it off by leasing?
Yeah, those, all that's going to be worked out with the, with the agreement that we have. But yeah, the idea is that we'll, we'll probably, at the end of the lease, I would imagine, turn it over to them. But we'll own it in the meantime, yeah.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
Move to accept it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item C. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? All right, item C carried?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, item D, general warrant, or warranty deed. Consider approval of a general warranty deed transferring property located in the Pittsburgh Research and Development Park to the Kansas Board of Regents for the construction of the KBI facility.
Mayor Commissioners, I have Ed McKechnie with me. This is the project we've been talking about for a long time, it's a KBI facility. I believe the city put up some money for the initial design of the facility, and it's on city property at this point. The action today would be to transfer the land over to the Board of Regents so they can get started on the construction, and Ed is here to answer any questions. Ed, if you can get near that mic.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me. Ed McKechnie with Pittsburgh State. We have the funds in place. Groundbreaking will be invited to in, say, February or so. And we are ready to move to the next step, doing contracts. And we're, we've got about 20 people here altogether with construction. Total cost of the facility, about $56 million. Bill will be a world-class law enforcement facility located here in Pittsburgh. It's just going to be a great anchor for that research park full of scientists and students learning how to support our law enforcement agencies across southeast Kansas.
You did say 56 million.
Yes, sir. And none, and, and you guys helped us out with the first 70,000, and we, the reason we're moving so fast is because of this commission. And the legislature took note of that and passed the money. The federal delegation was very supportive of the money to do it, and the good work and the great relationship we have has been very much appreciated.
How many, do you have an idea, I know it's difficult, but how many extra people will be working in the facility? How many more employees?
Yeah, so by the time you put in, so we're, we're also putting in a cybersecurity lab. By the time you put in KBI agents, Pitt State Police, you're looking in the 30, 40, 50 range as you build up. And just as we began the conversations around this, we, we moved cybersecurity out there. You know, 15 years ago, if you talk about cybersecurity, you might say, okay, who's going to hire a cybersecurity person, right? And then now today, it's an essential part of every business. And so getting, getting resources closer to law enforcement, giving students the opportunity to work there, and then giving our law enforcement, which were really facility poor in this part of the state, this really kind of changes the, the view of this.
So Ed, you said the groundbreaking is February, what, what's the completion date?
27, sometime in 27. So we're the, we have a very aggressive KBI director that is keeping his foot on us. We're trying to move quickly as possible in the first quarter of, of 27. I did remind people that, that are from, not from southeast Kansas, that sometimes God turns the rain on, the, the water on down here for weeks on end. And so, you know, it is what it is, right? The weather down here is a little bit harder than it is in the rest of the state to work with. But if we can get in, in this next summer and get it all walled in, then we should be able to, to put the foundation forward, then we should be able to get in in 27. Huge project.
Amazing project, very.
Who's KBI office located?
So right now, we're up on North Broadway, and that went in in 99. Actually, when I was on the Appropriations Committee, which was a long time ago. And then they outgrew that facility. And then we have the child victim of Task Force that's going to be, that has, was appro, that was approved in the last legislature, that would be part of this. The Attorney General's Office will put a person down here, ongoing conversations with other federal agencies. Co-locating in a place like this is something that law enforcement very much supports. And in fact, there will be a backup communications desk for the city that'll be there, that Pittsburgh State Police will be monitoring also. So trying to make this as universal for the region as possible.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, I will abstain from this simply because my full-time job is in this. I'm fully supportive of the project, but I do think it's a little self-serving for me to, to vote on this project, but I'm, I'm very supportive of it, so. Been moved and seconded to approve item D. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
Commissioners, thank you very, very much, we appreciate.
Item D is passed.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, item E is taken care of. Item F, disposition of bids, Four Oaks Irrigation Project. Consider staff recommendation to award the bid for the Four Oaks Irrigation Refurbishing and Remodeling Update Project to Nate's Lawn and Landscape Incorporated of Pittsburgh, Kansas, in the amount of 2,000, 243,150 dollars. Good evening, Toby.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just the two-line summary, we're going to bring the Four Oaks Irrigation System into 2024 technology. Updates some valving, some, some piping around the greens, bring them to a maintainable level. Right now, as it stands, it's a very labor-intensive system for Chris Loy and his staff. Hot summers mean they're rotating in and out four or five times a day to keep things from burning up. So this is a much-needed project to get this completed and move us forward, getting a little bit greener golf course.
Toby, I noticed that there, there's a, a huge disparity between the two bids. Is there a reason for that?
Nate's is a local company, so they don't have to mobilize, you know, they're not buying hotel rooms, they're not, you know, bringing equipment in. So that's probably the, the advantage that Nate's Lawn and Landscape had over the competitors. We had three come to the mandatory meeting, two bid on it. And I, you know, when you start factoring, it's probably going to be, you know, probably at least a four-month, maybe- factoring, it's probably going to be, you know, probably at least a four-month, maybe a six-month project, that's a lot of per diems you have to pay out.
Toby, is that something you hope to have done by golf season next?
I, I would love to have it done, you know, sooner than later. Obviously, weather is a big factor in this, but as soon as we, as soon as this goes into effect, we'll give a notice to proceed and get parts ordered and get Nate out there working on it. Chris will coordinate all the, you know, there's going to be some holes that have to be closed, greens that have to be closed, and he'll coordinate that with Nate's and make it as less painful as we can be to the golfers.
Is this, is this fairways and greens, or?
Yes, fairways will be operational, um, with 100% coverage on it.
And is this, is this ARPA fund money, Darren?
Yeah, great point. This is one of the four or five projects we passed a few months ago to commit our ARPA funds.
Any other question?
I move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item F. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carried. And brings us to non-agenda reports and requests. Darren, anything?
I, I don't have anything. Everybody seems to be looking blankly at Thanksgiving as rather than order, but no, thanks for asking.
All right, anybody else? Okay, brings me to Pittsburgh Positive, and probably my last Pittsburgh Positive of the year, um, because we only have one meeting in December, but, um, she's a personal friend, obviously, but if anybody has the, um, fortune of knowing her, Debbie Brock is, um, one of the most positive people I've ever met, and somebody I lean on. My wife and I and family lean on her a lot of times to, to pick us up, and I know a lot of other people in the community do as well, so, um, special person and, uh, very deserving. So I, we'll have her in the next meeting, and, um, if there's nothing else, I'd just say one last thing, support, support your small business, um, Saturday this week and, and throughout the holiday season, and, uh, wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Can we, can we, I don't want to trump your, your final. Can you get up and just talk about what's coming with the holiday celebrations?
Oh, yeah.
This is, because I, I don't keep calendars very well, and I don't want to.
Yeah, so we've got Small Business Saturday, like what Stu's referring to, which is shopping all downtown businesses, uh, all day on Saturday, the 30th, and then at 6:30 PM on Saturday evening, we will have the Community Tree Lighting Ceremony. That's at Second and Broadway, right at Pritchett Pavilion. Um, we will have vendors set up, we will have some entertainment, we will have a, um, celebrity emcee. Uh, of course, I believe, uh, the main man, Santa, I, I bet, will show up, and, um, we look forward to having the community out. Uh, there'll be a little caroling and, and just a great celebration, so bring friends, family, just yourself, um, and come out and enjoy it, and we'll light the tree a little after 6:30.
And the parade is?
Monday at?
6:30.
6:30 as well, so good, easy time to remember. So Monday night, we'll have the Downtown Christmas Parade.
You looked at the weather for Monday night, yeah? I haven't, I haven't.
I think it's going to be beautiful, Stu.
I'm sure it's going to be 65 in sunny.
Yes.
And the last one is the Turkey Trot. I don't think there's any question what day that is, but.
Yeah, it's on Thanksgiving morning, so.
750, almost 800 people participating, so.
Sign up and, and trot.
You want to burn calories before you bring them in.
Walk, run, push a stroller, whatever you got to do, but yeah.
You can, you can, uh, overeat in confidence if you go to the Turkey Trot.
You survive.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. And yes, Cheryl reminded me, our, speaking of our last meeting, we'll only have one in December, and it'll be December 17th.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.